Right, I would like to call the November seventeenth meeting to order. Carolyn, would you please read the roll call?
Welsh, here.
Morgan.
Here.
Dan Anderson.
Here.
Ethan.
Here.
Williams.
Here.
Pop.
Here.
Mike Anderson.
Here.
Do you have a bunch?
Okay, let's then say the final plan, Jerry, please.
The United States of America and to do the public protest against one nation under God in this whole way that they were created in justice for all.
Okay, is there any order of business for emergency?
Yeah.
And there is no attendance on Zoom.
Yeah.
And I would like to ask for a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Mike moved.
Second.
Jerry seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Does anyone need to declare a conflict of interest? Okay, hearing none, seeing none. I would ask for an approval of the consent agenda, which includes the minutes, the claims, the budget reports.
So moved.
Dan has moved.
Second.
Ricky has seconded. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries. Do we have anyone? Well, I might mention that on number nine, Dana and Tim are not going to be attending this evening. And moving on to ten then is public comments where people are allowed to give us a three-minute presentation on something they're concerned about. Linda, do you have?
Yes, I would like to make some comments, but they're on number twelve and number thirteen, so I don't know if you want me to wait till then.
That might be much more appropriate, so that we're on that page.
Correct.
That would be, but you will be limited to three minutes.
That's perfect.
That's okay. Okay, so that moves us to number eleven, which is a building permit. And that application is from the Lutheran Church. And it's for an addition to the, to house a new heating and cooling system. And there's a drawing on the back of that permit. I'm moved to approve it. Kelly has moved to approve the building permit for the Lutheran Church. Stan seconded. Any discussion? You've checked this out?
Yes.
Brian, okay. Any questions or concerns? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay, that brings us to item number twelve, which is the second reading of ordinance twenty-two oh five, which will repeal the tax incentive on housing. And that, is that the one you wanted to address? Yeah, Linda, okay, would you like to go to the podium?
Okay, it's supposed to be right here, so I'll throw it off a little bit. Anyway, so Linda Hiltner, private speaking as private citizen. After listening to the speaker last night at the economic development meeting, I had some thoughts about repealing the residential tax incentive by the city council because to him that seemed like a very important thing to keep in place, especially since we are giving incentive to businesses coming to town. And to me, those two go hand in hand, housing businesses coming to town. So businesses, they don't pay tax for what, five years? If I was trying to find ordinance in there, but I couldn't find it in. But I'm asking the city council to reconsider that ordinance and not to repeal that tax incentive because we do need housing, we do need people coming to town. And if that's going to get people here, help get people here, then let's keep it.
Okay.
That's what I wanted to say.
Thank you. Thank you for being at the meeting last night, and that was indeed very good. So, street committee people, would you like to respond to her, what our thoughts are on this situation?
Well, I would comment on it. The main reason that we've done it, number one, we're doing a big development in Neco Valley and Hanson Development, where normally, I think at the time, we were thinking of doing gifts, which really don't work very well here. So in this particular case, we're running up our salads. So we just feel that if we're putting the money up ahead to give the benefit to the people that are building the house, we're kind of providing water and sewer and road and.
But you're also providing that in an industrial park, water, sewer, electric, that's all put in by the city, right? So why take it away from one group while another group still has it? To me, that there's out of bounds, something's out of bounds there.
Well, I think it was just the idea that we're talking about industrial park that we're starting brand new with this, we're starting new housing in addition, but we've got housing, this isn't doing a housing that isn't brand new, so we're just, we just had to make some of those choices, we're spending a ton of money and.
I believe Daniel did mention that they did the infrastructure as a, for it as well for them going into it, kind of like thought set up, it's, yeah. They did the same thing as what we were doing with, with this.
So can I ask one question? Who could, so who going to get benefited from you taking it away? Because you putting lots of money up in front right now, doing all this infrastructure, and I know about it, thought of interstate and health program. Are you benefiting developers? Right now? Or you think it's going to be a benefit for the citizens?
You know, the normal process in Rapid City or other towns, when they do that, the city would probably put it in and charge it to the, to the lot. So if you bought a lot, you might pay thirty thousand for the lot, and then you might pay assessment on your taxes to help pay for the road and sewer and water, and we just don't, I've never done that.
Yes, I understand that, but when you doing it up in front, are you sure the developer's still not going to sell it for the higher price?
Well, I guess we don't factually know that, no.
Because this, and another thing about the Echo Valley and public should ask, do you put infrastructure right now just to build lots? Or it's going to be built, I mean, are they going to build houses or whatever, because this makes a huge difference. Because if somebody has to buy a lot, probably going to be cheaper with the infrastructure the developer has to put in, but they still have to build the house. So if there is an incentive for those people to build a house, just because the lot is cheaper, is this the only incentive they get? Or get this?
Well, that original plan we had in place, it was five years, no city tax on the structure. How was it? Remember how?
Well, I wasn't the one who put it in place. It was before me, but yes, it was, if you build a new house, you get this incentive from the city portion, so you don't have to pay that for five years. And then you guys can, I think you have to revisit it, and I think it's about time you do it in a proper time, it should have been revisited. How to go forward, you can change the formula, or you can amend it, that's what you're doing right now. But the incentive was, was building the house. Because right now, and I know this city puts a lot of money into the infrastructure, just trying to help this development. But my question would be, are they, who gonna get benefit from this? Because for me right now, it looks like the developer, because I don't know that somebody decides to go and buy a lot over there, are they promised this lot's going to be cheaper because city put so much money into it?
Well, the one thing those people that buy those lots are not going to have to do is put ten to fifteen thousand into their own subject thing. And all those people along Stone Drive have had to do that, that have built on that development so far. So that does, I would think, benefit the, the home buyer, the buyer of the home. That will save those dollars. So that's.
He did. Kelly, what was his name, Daniel?
Kingsley.
Yeah, he had some very compelling things to say. And I kind of, when he said that, I thought, you know, we want houses to be built, and he seemed to think, did they, did they have the same tax incentive that we have?
Yes, yep, they did the same thing, the five-year tax rebate for five years, is what he said.
And, and you know, I, I thought definitely with industrial park, absolutely do it. And I don't know, if I, if I could have my way, I'd slow it down a little bit, I mean, I think it's something to think about. And how many houses did it impact?
And I'm excited, I'll pull it, but just because there's some questions. Another thing you probably couldn't think about to, about the formula, you always can change formula in different ways. You still can have an incentive, but your formula can only be, it's not going to be zero, but in five years.
Was?
You can do twenty, forty, eighty. And.
Was it like zero, twenty, forty, eighty?
Right now, it's all zero.
Zero all the way through to five years.
Which on a three hundred thousand dollar house would be would be about sixteen hundred dollars a year.
And Caroline probably know because we've done some property tax surveys, only got three, so you probably would know how much you paid back.
And we are grandfathering those in, those three.
So they get the deal?
They get the deal.
Well, it seems like it should be more than three, because we have two governors wanting to deal.
But they haven't applied.
So.
I don't know.
Oh, who applied?
The three applied. They've been notified that they don't apply, what you do, I mean, there's things they have to provide us, we just don't go up to them and say, you know, they have to do their work too, you know.
Oh, I know. So the, I guess my question is, what is incentive for the buyer? Okay, they don't have to put a subject thing, this is the one incentive, so you always have to think about incentives to, to try to sell it, because right now, they're just going to take it away. Okay, take it away, but at least come up and say, this is still your incentive, it doesn't look like you're taking everything away from you. You don't have to do this anymore. But this is only Echo Valley part, portion of it. We do have developments, I understand.
Oh, this isn't across the board?
Yes, so this is going to be across the board, but like I say, this is an echo value, they don't have to do a subject thing, great. What about others? Because others still have their sewer and water, the city lines, the same as Hill Crest, they don't have to do subject things. What incentives for those people to build houses there? I guess this is my question, if there is no incentive, there is no incentive. But it was, we put it in the first place to have some kind of incentive to encourage people to help it. We didn't have, we didn't have many built, you know, but, and I didn't know, you have to look back when you do this and see how much we paid out, is it really making a difference right now to take it away? Are we going to have a lot of houses built in like next year? That's why we try and, and we can generate some kind of property tax revenue, that's why we're doing it? Or we're just going to have one house built in next year? Is it worth doing it right now? I don't know, I just question.
Yeah.
It's just something to think about.
Because we have all these lots we're developing, Echo Valley, Glorious Street, Hill Crest, is that right?
And you know, they can stay as a lot for another few years, you don't know. That's what I'm saying, especially with the supply chain issues. Are we really going to have what the power will go here next year or so? We're going to have one or two, I guess. It's a win, but I understand the reasons why you're doing it, because you guys put lots of money up in front for infrastructure, makes sense. But still, the question is what the incentive to do, don't just not have anything. I'm not vouching for anything.
Well, you know, our budget is getting so big naturally, well, thankfully, we're really searching for ways to generate revenue. And, and that, that was kind of the thought, and we do a lot of other things for, for the housing. But again, he, he, he was a great speaker, and what is he, city manager?
Yep. And one thing I just want to say, and he mentioned yesterday too, you have to be correct, you have to do more work than the rest of the city does to bring these people in. And when we start taking all this stuff away, just saying, well, we already putting a lot of money up in front, that benefits a developer actually, who is doing all this, who's trying to sell their lot. It benefits them, because now they can sell their lot. But how are you being proactive here by trying to attract more people, more people into town? When probably Sturgis can do it easier because they have all the incentive.
It is.
I don't know, I don't know if it costs a lot of money, but if you do this incentive, that's why you have to go back and look how much you paid actually. My, how much we paid in this, since two thousand sixteen, right? I think that's when it's been adopted. How much you paid really, you have to look at this and review and say, okay, we paid a lot of money back, so maybe we should slow down. Or maybe we paid just two thousand, like, I don't know, three, four thousand? Caroline would know. Is it worth doing it right now? I don't know.
You know, I, I've been for knocking it out, and, and that great speaker impacted me, I thought, gee, because he had a, a good story about how they got the Indian motorcycle company to locate there instead of Rapid City and Spearfash. I mean, they're really a little town competing with the big boys, and they won. And it was just horrific, the, I, I mean, tremendous positive impact on the community and really gutty on their part. I don't know, I, Mary, do we have, do we, do we have?
This would be our second reading.
Can, can we take more time?
We could table it.
The only thing I would say though is be positive, if, if all these lots are going to get developed, it would impact us huge. You know, I mean, then there is going to be a lot of money that is.
Like, there's twenty-five houses built next year.
Yeah, I mean, it would be huge then, you can advise and you have to be.
But I'm just saying, since two thousand sixteen, we, we put this incentive in, how many, how much actually we give them? I probably can count, like, it's enough with two heads to.
And, and only three applied for it.
Three applied for it.
But like Lily said, you can change the formula rather than zero, zero, zero.
We can have zero, twenty, forty, eighty, sixty.
Whatever.
We.
There is different options to do these different formulas, but they're all the same change.
But I'm cautious in being able to change it anytime, because it's.
No, we get, no, no, we made the offer, we got to stick to it. And one thing, when this was put in place, there weren't many lots, very many lots, so we were, you know, now we are spending millions of dollars to develop, you know, infrastructure to all these lots, which wasn't being done at the time it was implemented.
Which I got to say is benefiting the developers, but not really, because the developer would just pass it off and raise the prices of the lots way, way, way more higher. So we are putting a lot of money out to try to help people be able to have affordable properties in this town.
And, and we don't know that Echo Valley may not have happened if we didn't step to a fight and put up, we're going to put up something over two million, two point two million bucks. And if we had, if we don't, if we had not done that, I'm not sure that they, you know, how do I?
I don't think they would have ever.
I don't know that they would have ever done.
No, that's not the great thing you guys done, I agree with this.
Well, and, and he made that point, Sturgis, that they did a lot of really proactive things with housing and, and senior housing that just, and I think that they did a forty-unit senior housing deal, and the developer says, what if you don't fill it? And they said, if you don't fill it, we'll pay whatever it costs. It was gutty, and then it came out that they not only filled the forty lot, the forty apartments, immediately, they had a waiting list of twelve. Anyway.
And Dana Foreman made a good point last night when he asked the question, it costs seventy thousand dollars a lot to get infrastructure to those lots. I mean, that's how many dollars we're putting out to get infrastructure in. And, and that was what it cost in Sturgis, and that's what keeps coming back to us on these grant and loan applications is they do, just think it is so high here in western South Dakota, so.
Seventy thousand per lot?
Mm-hmm, yeah, so.
That, that makes sense.
So that's why our developers have not moved forward, and so if we're going to get housing, and we're putting those dollars into that housing to get that there, that's, that's quite a lot of carry for us right now, so. Okay, so what is your wishes of the council then?
Well, doing this is probably more my idea than, only because I'm on the budget committee and we're trying to make our ends made, but I guess I'm not, I mean, if we think we want to massage it a little bit and get some benefit for a couple of years, we don't have to make another five-year deal, we could do a one, one, two-year deal with the deal and not have it be a hundred percent and.
Do with a percentage deal possibly, or?
Rather we pass it tonight, the second meeting or.
Then you can go back and see, do lots just sitting there and nothing's happening, I guess?
Well, the interesting, the interesting part is, is only three people put into that, so you know, is, is there something that maybe we need to look at as far as, you know, kind of maybe helping them through the process, or, you know, I, to me, that just.
Because it's rebate, you know how rebate works, you go to the Nards, you buy something, they give you this little sheet saying you can apply rebate. How many people actually?
I do it all the time.
Yeah.
I make a lot of money that way.
But.
Not make it.
My, my point is, is just, I mean, it is a great program, but you know, maybe, maybe something we need to take a look at is the avenue to, to help them understand that a little bit. I mean, it is a great deal, and to me, it doesn't make sense why you wouldn't, you know, take advantage of that.
And Carolyn does explain that to them, but it must go kind of right over the top of their head. So what I would like to know is whether we want to table this and review it, or do we want to adopt this tonight? Or do we want to table and, and rewrite it? Because it's not written with what your ideas are as far as alternating at this point, altering at this point. What's your wishes?
And what do you table it?
Table, you think we should table?
Take, take a bit more time, I'm kind, I'm kind of for that.
I would like to not just flat table it, but discuss it further as a, I hate to see it leave. It's permanently, or, I mean, altogether, I'd like the percentage, we need to come up with a solution that it is gradual or.
And, and maybe this percentage or the amount of years, maybe we could.
Okay, so we will table then for tonight, bring it back at the next meeting. And so, street committee, you want to take that on again to very, figure out if it's five years and then what those percentages are going to be, or we stay zero, zero? Okay, so.
But I, I do think we could do anything. I don't think we want to do a five-year deal and then two years from now, change it, I think we just make, we don't have to do a five-year deal, can we just do a two-year deal? One-year deal, if we want, I guess, rather than do it and then take it away.
Okay, so you guys put your great thoughts on it and bring us back a recommendation in the next meeting. And consensus that we table it for tonight, is that where we're at? Okay, moving on then, number thirteen is second reading on ordinance for the twenty twenty-two budget supplement. And Carolyn did adjust some of those numbers on there that she has noted to meet our needs, and this would be the second reading. Any? Any questions for Carolyn on some of her notes that she's made here on these, on the document?
Are there any big changes, Carolyn? Or they're just like they were?
I had to make a change in the.
One thing you changed was on the chamber budget, there was twenty-five thousand in there before, but actually, the carryover amount should have been ten thousand nine hundred seven, so she made that correction. And also, there was an interest amount there that needed to be supplemented.
So the very top one, the forty-two ninety other expense one, I did change that because after reviewing it again, it increased a little closer to the amount that I had the supplementing, and I looked at it and for whatever reason, I guess it'll come this next month, but our liability insurance hasn't been paid yet for this year. So I knew that that would need to be coming out of there as well, and some payouts for insurance that is when an employee reaches a certain dollar amount out of their pocket, the city reimburses them back, so I did change that one. And then the other one, I did adjust the library of what Linda was looking, is this something else you got concerned about?
I didn't see that.
Oh, you named two line items.
I did.
Did you not?
No, I don't think so, but, oh, okay, let me take a look.
Well, there was a bill that came in that, there's doing online training for Esther.
Oh, right.
That that will, they don't have to send her, her training, and so they chose to do it this way, so that was the other amount that I had to adjust, and that was under the travels of due swine. So anyways, those were the two changes.
Right, any other questions?
I have one, seeing that purchase a podium, how come that thing looks so bad?
I mean, yeah.
And you have two new ones now.
Okay.
And they have been on order since about May.
Has it been that long?
No.
Yeah.
Well, the conversation restarted right after that episode, oh, no, it was alumni, it was July.
Yeah.
You're right, since July, and they still have not arrived.
I see that.
So we've gone through the REA annual meeting, the Golden West annual meeting, our annual, our economic development, and still have the same bad podium, so we'll, we'll get there. One of these days, you're going to have two really nice podiums, good question, Jerry. Okay.
I like the chair.
Oh, good. All right, any other comments? If not, I'd entertain a motion to approve the supplement for the twenty-two, twenty twenty-two budget.
So moved.
Stan, moved, Kelly seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, opposed, motion carries. That brings us to item number fourteen, which is second reading on the twenty twenty-three budget.
No changes remain to this from the last reading, last phase.
Everything is same, right?
Yep, exactly.
I'll make a motion to approve this second reading of the twenty twenty-three budget.
Then Stan has moved.
Second.
Dan has seconded. Any questions, comments, concerns? Dan is seconded, any questions, comments, concerns? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries to approve the twenty twenty-three annual budget, okay. So that all, that brings us to. The well school um report, Mr. Ermitz, welcome as being part of the coaching team, our staff of that championship team, proud of you.
Uh yeah, I was asked uh Tuesday, I wanted to say a few words. I think I was the third person because Dr. Pedden couldn't be here and Coach Ender Shaw couldn't be here, so. Um they asked me to come in and speak just a little bit and tell you about the trip and of course championship, which hopefully you all saw. Um I guess the first thing that I would start off with with regards to the these football prior and. I know everybody is extremely proud of what they saw on the field and the trophy, the championship, the way the boys represented themselves there. But I think the community needs to do more than that entire trip. Those boys represented in this town, their school, their parents, you know, in just such tremendous way. I personally had a lot of concern that they were leaving early because of the weather, oh my God, forty plus teenage boys. You know, for an extra day, what are we gonna do with them? Completely business-like the entire trip, yes, there's teenage boys, but I mean, they were, as Coach would say, locked in and were ready to go. We got compliments from the bus driver, about their demeanor and their behavior. Uh compliments from the motel, compliments from every restaurant we went into. Um the uh staff at the Dakota Dome, compliment our kids and the way they came in and where they gave. So they did a nice job representing this community and really deserve a lot of credit for that, not just what they did on the field. Um arriving there, they were not starstruck at all by the venue, um they enjoyed it. They took it in, they looked around, but at one moment, God, I would feel like they. Were in such awe that they possibly couldn't perform if they would be out of their sorts. Everything from, from when we walked through the garage door to warmups to the. That was a particular building. They played with such a confidence, but they prepared with that confidence. Just really proud of those kids and what they've done. The uh return home that evening, um. You know, was was emotional, I don't know how it was for the kids, but brought tears in my eyes to pull up here late at night. Uh and then Sunday to have a reception at school like we did for it, we had just. Lot of thanks to all. Um I wish that Lex was here to, so he can rattle off the thank yous to everybody. Um I can tell you that we now have the team signed about eighty thank you cards that are going out to this community and beyond. Um the boys didn't have to pay for a single meal, the entire time they were there, donations from the community and their misses paid completely for their meals. Um and we got kind of an unexpected donation from the third restaurant we ate at. Um well, Tailgaters in Brandon charged us uh two hundred and fifteen dollars to feed the entire team pasta, breadsticks. And you know, when he was questioned about it, I'll try to do whatever I want.
And.
Keep on going back.
Guys, want more breadsticks?
Come on with the nine.
He was amazing, just loving it, so.
Um Harrisburg High School allowed us to practice twice in their grill house, which was just a little trip, very similar to the trip to the Dakota Dome. Um yeah, I mean, we just felt like we were given the royal treatment the whole way through and kids responded and. I don't think there was ever a moment of doubt in the coaches or the kids, well, the outcome was there. Maybe that company, so, yeah, just super proud of that whole thing. Um I think it's something we can be proud of for a long time. Uh up next, we have pinned, I mean, the ride continues, we've been invited to attend a rush game. Um boys would get to go down onto the ice during the interventions. Um get a trivia video played, play photo opportunities afterwards and they're offering discounted tickets for the entire city of Long. Any with some fanfare, it doesn't matter, and get discounted tickets to come and see that stuff. We don't have a date for that yet that I know of, but that'll be coming up really soon, sooner or later as well, since you're still fresh and you're one of the boys moving fast. Um and they uh. They're currently looking at championship rings, so. Um and once again, it sounds like we are receiving some donations towards those championship rings to offset the cost that it's all, so. Again, the community is just amazing, so. Thank you to the community and businesses and everybody in Long for their support, financially and just cheering for us, that was amazing. Um but I do want you to know that the boys represented this time on the play, that was just outstanding. And everyone.
That has something to do with their coaches and their parents, they they were taught well.
Yeah, I I think that's a testament to their parents.
You guys.
And then also, you know, the community has certain expectations and skills. Yeah, and and absolutely, Coach Ender Shaw sets a tremendous example. Robert is a model brusher team, but that means is do the right things and do them every day and make it happen. Um and then the second thing I was asked to speak about was the Veterans Day program. We postponed that due to the weather, it was supposed to take place that Wednesday. Of course, we had a late start at the school and the team was leaving literally earlier than we planned. Um so we postponed that due to the weather, came back Monday. Um. I thought again, kind of riding that high, but those seniors came in and did an amazing job, I do wanna give them all the credit. I basically give them the parameters, this is what I want you to do, they elect who's doing what and away they go. And all I've gotta really do is walk around the room and check and make sure they're doing it and check and make sure they're on top of stuff and even some last minute changes that make Monday. Made some changes to the program. That were new, that have been well received, so. Yeah, they just did a really good job, we got, that was very well attended. Uh Veterans Day, we were playing for a championship, came back Monday. Is there anything I can add or any questions you guys have there?
Other than the chess.
I don't have one of those. We we, I know we do have some worse stuff that's going on, I just don't. Have an exact information come, um we have um. There are a couple different groups that like to play competitions that I'm not, that I'm not sponsoring, so I would be not feel comfortable talking about that. Yeah, there's, there's lots of great stuff. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you too, Garrett, to the coaching that you do there, yeah.
Funny.
So, yes, very. Right, attorney report.
Yes. So, um it specifies public report, so man, you wanna tell me, you know, if there's any specific. Question for the public or I can just give a part of my report that's not attorney claim privilege? Yeah, okay, so um as the council knows, um our本次 hearing is set for November twenty-eighth, two thirty in the afternoon. Um. As of today, Love has still failed to produce any damages documentation, they're untimely at this point in that regard. Um. And obviously. The city has not had the opportunity to then burn over any damages information to the expert, because we have nothing. And and then, of course, you know, it goes without saying, our expert has not had a chance to review anything, we haven't had a re- a chance to review, so. Not quite sure how that's gonna play in, given that twenty-third is the last date to be able to submit things. Um today, Love filed their brief, which is kind of their um. Response to the judge's invitation to provide her with a legal basis for being able to award damages in a contempt proceeding. They just filed it this afternoon, so that's okay, I sent it out to you guys this afternoon, but may not have even gotten it, I don't know, before this meeting, but. Um hopefully, um Attorney Doug Abraham and Kent Hagen and I will be able to have a conference call tomorrow. On um how we want to respond to their legal brief. Um given that we still don't even have any information about damages, daily loss. Um, you know, her insinuation, if you can try and get punitives in the door, if you can come up with any legal basis for that, I'll consider it. Um so. We'll be discussing that tomorrow, um but that was just filed today and um. And then I sent out in that email the protective order that we stipulated to a couple of weeks ago. Um but Love's never filed the order for the the judge's signature, adopting the order that we, or the um. Protective order stipulation that we both, both parties agreed to, we kicked it back and forth a little bit, everyone stipulated to it. They didn't file the proposed order for judge's signature until Monday afternoon, but I did look before I left and she signed it today. Um so that order that I had sent out before, that's basically what she. Um that stipulation that I sent out before, that's what she ordered today and signed the order. Um. Um. Other than that, we we haven't really been in a real big hurry to line up a damages expert because there's been no damages to even talk about ourselves, let alone. Turn over to a damages expert, so um right now, uh ball has been in Love's court, they're untimely again. Um and then I I have thoughts on um what they they filed today. Uh as a brief um at the judge's invitation, but those would be privileged thoughts. Okay, right, okay, thank you, yeah.
Right, so that brings us then to um the mayor's report and Dan, would you update the ambulance?
Okay, and so. We do finally have a full board. Begging everything, so um Kalen Grimmon is president. Lily is the secretary, Angel Sealer's treasurer, I'm the vice president and Zach Hoffman is the other board member. And Lynn Riggins is the director, we do have. Full board. For a while, very good.
Good, good news.
Yeah, okay, thank you, Dan, and thanks for stepping in there and and helping that along. Uh the second part of the mayor's report is the loan application, I did have the seven questions that had come back and for clarification or more information. I did resubmit those and have not heard anything since, I did not do that until Monday, knowing that last week they were out. Three days for their state uh convention, so I knew nothing was gonna be happening there, I didn't want it to get buried in a pile. On Friday was uh Veterans Day, I knew they weren't gonna be in the office, so I intentionally held it until Monday. And it was there and she notified me that she had received it, but I've not heard anything back yet, so that's where we're at on that. Okay, any other questions or comments anyone wants to make? Any committees that's happening that I didn't?
So then you submitted it with. That a certain portion of the lots would have to be.
I, okay, with the um owner's permission, we identified four, the affordable hundred. And I um designated what the other two are the two other two thirds would be, which was to recognize uh middle career. Uh families and that was words taken right out of the governor's letter to the legislature as to. Why it should not go to South Dakota housing in the first place, so those kinds of uh families could be addressed. And the other portion I notated with facts and figures from Ellsworth Authority that we needed to be um. Pognisant that Rapid City Region is short three thousand housing units for Ellsworth Air Force Base. So we did not wanna, and I quoted the uh what their military, the the airmen's. Uh what their housing allotment was, so uh we did not wanna lock up all into that. Low affordable housing when we have airmen that are gonna need it and they aren't gonna fit in that category either. So, that's probably gonna give them enough powder in the gun to kick it right back to us, but by George, we're either gonna make it or break it and get on with it, so. That's what we went with, but I did have that discussion with Echo Valley before I did that. Okay, thank you, any other questions? All right, so then Assistant Finance's report, Callie.
Good evening, this is Assistant Finance Officer report, to let you guys know what I've been doing as Assistant Finance Officer as well as the Economic Development Director. Um so what I've been doing is I've been doing all the utility billing as well as point of sale payments. Uh Carolyn and I just took a website training together so we can make updates to the websites and. I think there's a couple of things that have been outdated, so we're gonna get that changed. Um I also assist Carolyn with any administrative work she has for me and then also I manage the Facebook page. So let me know if you have any questions. Thank you.
You're doing a great job of trying to balance both of those two, so. Some of your days have been pretty long, so, all right, thank you, and then Carolyn.
Well, note too, I do the city council meeting minutes too.
And that takes a while, doesn't it?
Um I didn't have a lot to report on, I just, I guess I was gonna mention that. I don't know what the title is, but information that goes through our airport actually goes through the Ellsworth Airport space and not like the regional airport. I don't know why that is, but that's, they're kind of our overseers and I had received a call from them last week. Yeah, I'm like, and along, um I believe it was on Thursday that there was a plane that had become disabled and had to land at our airport. And so Public Works went out to assist them and I filed a note on that. The runway was closed due to this and got it cleared off and um so that's. Doing well and really appreciating Public Works going out there and tending to that for us. And then um got another call that our beacon is not working out there, the light is going, but it's not spinning. But it was reported that I never gonna get a hold of uh Western Electric right to check it out. But um our engineers with Meaden Hunt, this David Tyner, I can't even pronounce his name. He indicated that, you know, if you can't get it working, it's not a big thing and not to put a lot of money into it because it will actually get replaced next year with the project, so. He just has to let us know when those things happen and stuff. And so we've had some activity in there for it and then um just wanted to comment that next.
And then just wanted to comment that next week, the garbage pickup will be on Wednesday and Thursday because of the holiday. We put it on Facebook. I'm going to try and put some notifications at the post office and out here, but not if I put it out here, maybe more people can see that. So I hear that.
When you do it on the
I'm trying to learn that yet. And I haven't been able to get in contact with them to get our schedules to get that training. But I plan on doing that tomorrow. And so hopefully that's what happens. Doing what I can until I get to that one.
Do what you can do, right?
And that's all I have.
Okay, any questions? Okay, good job. All right, Public Works, Garrett.
Yeah, I just, I want to comment on the airplane too. It sounded like Peyton Trevor did a really good job of going out and helping them off. Getting it locked down out there, I guess it was just a sheet of ice out there. So they did a really good job. And we've also been up at the ambulance building. They had a sewer gas smell. I'm going to just kind of looked at the pit and I just don't, I don't know if that water level was high enough up there. We went up there, they did some stuff. And look at that. So we'll just start with that pit and make sure that that water level stays up so the gas doesn't come out of there. Kind of designed for the pipe to hang down and as long as the water covers the pipe, you know, it's okay. But as soon as that gets lower, then that gas can come out. So we need to keep that up there. And then also we've been having problems with the fire alarm system. The last two nights it's gone off at like three thirty in the morning. So fire department gets called plus I get called from the monitoring system. So I'm going to look into it. Neither, we neither, either update it, I think, or just get rid of it and put regular smoke detectors in there. Because I think this, just guessing that was put in because the building wasn't occupied all the time. You know, and now there's somebody there all the time. So if there is, or you know, most of the time, you know, if there is a issue with a fire, the smoke line, so I just didn't know.
So do we have those monitoring systems in any other of our city buildings?
Yep, we have it in the police station, the library and the fire hall. What's that? And here, yeah.
And none of those are twenty-four seven, but the ambulance shed is twenty-four seven occupied.
Right.
So that's why you might consider recommending that we just eliminate that since it's been an issue anyway.
Right. I don't know, Dan. I don't know. I think you guys can guess.
Yeah, I think we can just put regular smoke detectors in there because there's somebody there. I mean, we don't need to, you know, these buildings, if there's something happens, you know, the night there's somebody here or there, if we've got just the regular smoke detectors, carbon monoxide detectors, I think we could. Because that thing's, I'm sure it's probably getting outdated. Yeah, I don't know whether, I talked to Mike with Golden West and he thought maybe some of the heads, you know, with them bad. Because the same one goes off in the same zone.
And if they're like, most of them, they're modeled, they don't make anymore.
Right, that's very small.
Yeah, that's what you said too.
So now the system is just off. They still have smoke detectors in the apartments, I believe.
So who would make that decision whether we eliminate that monitoring? Because they paid for that, the ambulance just pays for the monitoring system or just the city?
They do.
They do. So that's an ambulance board decision. Is that, would that be correct? Okay. So, all right. Sounds good.
And other than that, you know, we had a little, where I was leaving and it was icy and our sander broke down that morning and we couldn't get parts for it. So Wednesday night at the motel soup hall, they lived their way trying to figure out how to get the street sanded. Finally, I remember Golden West had one, so we rented theirs, got Peyton over there and hopefully everything looked pretty good.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was getting ready to call Casey Weaver right away and I looked at my phone and I was like, it's one o'clock in the morning. So no, and I want to appreciate you guys for giving me the opportunity, you know, to, taking early off work or good, making my time to go to go do this job with those boys. It's, it's an experience. I had a couple of mothers call me crying, thanking me for helping their boys out. So it's, it's really cool to be part of that.
Absolutely. Okay, all right. Anything else? Okay, so are there any items for discussion then? At this time, the next council meeting will be Monday, December fifth at six thirty. That's a change because of parade lights. Remembering that anybody that, any business that wants to do a parade light entry, Kaylee would entertain paying all those entries. And
So then the next one's also Mondays, correct?
A conflict with Christmas programs. We have a conflict in February two, but it's been that way of December.
Yeah, December, the meetings are going to be off schedule in terms of first one Monday, December fifth. The next one would be a Tuesday, December twentieth. Okay?
That's the night of the fall awards.
December fifth is.
Yeah.
So that's going to be a couple.
That's also the ambulance board meeting.
Oh, the second meeting.
Yeah, I realized that on that December fifth. That could be an issue for you then, right? You might want to submit your report. Okay, if that's okay with everybody else.
Then I also forgot to, Trevor registered to go to a wastewater class. And he's going to take the test that day too. So I think it's, I think it's the week, that week of December fifth too, so.
Yeah, well, good. Yeah, wastewater, I think, made the news tonight in Hermosa. Okay, anything else?
Did we ever, did we ever hear anything from that? For the station?
Yeah.
Did they push the date back again?
I haven't heard from date on it. I mean, had assumed that they would.
Yeah.
But it was the first of this month and then it was mid-November and now we're here.
I know, it's frustrating. Anything else? If not, we're at item number twenty-three.
I make a motion, we go into executive session for the purpose of discussing legal personnel issues according to S D C L one dash twenty-five dash two.
Okay, it's been moved in second. You go into executive session. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Thank you. And we would like Zach and Lilly to stay for a moment if you could, please.
Do I need to stay? What?
Well, you need to stay for some further discussion, but we're going to address. I declare us out of executive session. Is there any other business for tonight? Seeing no business, meaning is adjourned.